I haven't hit the gavel. Haven't hit the gavel in years now, y'all, so let's get rocking and rolling.
Good afternoon. Mr. Brennan?
President.
Mr. Rickaman?
Here.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Roger.
Mr. Vine?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mayor Benjamin?
Here, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the King of Justice. Reverend McDowell, would you give us a word, please?
Let us pray. Lord, for your goodness and mercy, for the ability to assemble today in in a way that engenders conversation and dialogue, for your presence that illumines each one of us. We thank you for this day and for those who have gathered. Particularly, we pray for this city of ours as we continue to expand and grow. Folk are nurtured and they feel a sense of empowerment. Bless us all. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Is there a motion to adopt an amendment of agenda adding the National Farmers Market Week proclamation, defer appointments, item thirty-nine to the Food Policy Committee and item forty to the Transportation and Tennessee Oversight Committee? And it's requested by Mr. Rickaman and add the discussion of hospitality tax boundary funding to executive session item number forty-two. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any other amendments? Mr. Duval?
Ms. Mayor, we're gonna defer, not defer, but take item seven and eight off of the consent agenda and talk about them.
I don't, are we? I think, I think, is that a preference or we could probably have some very brief statements before the consent agenda indicating our intentions to expand the lobbying team and let's keep it on the consent agenda.
Right.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
All right. All right, we're gonna adopt the agenda with those amendments with the previous question. Kirk Carrol?
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the July twentieth City Council meeting?
She'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is in discussion. Saying no, move the previous question, Kirk Carrol?
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye. Thank you. Madam City Manager?
Yes, sir, Mayor, Council, good afternoon. At this point, I think, Mayor, we will go ahead and take up the National Farmers Market Week proclamation. Ms. Tamika Isaac Devine?
Thank you, and actually, before we do that, Ms. Wilson, I did wanna just take a point of personal privilege. Our community, it just seems like Mayor, members of City Council, every week, we are learning of a giant in our community that is leaving us, but I wanted to recognize the loss of King Benjamin Lindbergh Jeffcoat, who served this community for many, many years, went, was an educator, worked with Richland One, then later went on to serve fourteen years as a commissioner in Richland One, and even until his last weeks was still very engaged as a community leader, calling me about speedhumps in his neighborhood and, Reverend McDowell, I promised him we'd get those done, so we have to get those done for him, but I just wanted to recognize he will be laid to rest this Friday at twelve noon and certainly has always been a supporter of this city and a partner, and I just wanted to recognize, and if we could take a moment of silence for King Benjamin Lindbergh Jeffcoat. Amen, thank you.
King Bill Jeffcoat was a gentleman's gentleman.
Yep.
Always classy. I enjoyed listening to Senator Patterson talk about how Commissioner Jeffcoat was always Reverend Rickman's favorite over him, whole other story, but he will be missed. Thank you, Mr. Vine.
Thank you. So on a lighter note, it's indeed my honor and pleasure, and I want to share this proclamation, the presentation of this proclamation with my colleague, Councilman Rickaman, who we both independently requested this proclamation, and so we will be presenting this together. But whereas our food is our wealth and we need to protect our farm, the farmers and their access to land, whereas farmers markets create between two hundred and fifty-seven and three hundred and sixty-one full-time jobs and generate up to thirteen million dollars in South Carolina alone, whereas April Jones is the founder of the Pinehurst Farmers Market located in downtown Columbia, South Carolina, in the Pinehurst neighborhood. April advocates for her community as part of the food justice and food sovereignty movement, and she is passionate about community gardens and farmers markets. And whereas as the founder of the Pinehurst Farmers Market, she helps to spread the value and importance of local farmers have by their access to the rich South Carolina soil. Now more than ever, we need to focus on protecting the things that are essential to the well-being and health of our communities. And whereas the next time you shop at your neighborhood farmer's market, remember, not only are you appeasing your taste buds, but you're giving your community a little economic boost, one dollar at a time. Now therefore, on behalf of Mayor Stephen K. Benjamin and all the members of Columbia City Council, we do hereby proclaim the week of August first to August seventh as a week where we recognize and emphasize the importance of farmers and farmers markets in the, in the community and recognize National Farmers Market Week. And, Mr. Mayor, I would just say that on Wednesdays, the Pinehurst Farmers Market is open, and so if anybody would like some fresh fruits and vegetables up, as well as, I've gotten some shrimp and some other great things there, check out the Pinehurst Market. Starts at one-thirty on Wednesdays, and it's every Wednesday.
Thank you, Ms. Devine.
Thank you. At this time, we want to recognize a longstanding city employee, Ms. Renee Terry, our Parking Operations Coordinator, and for this recognition, Ms. Elle Matney, our Parking Services Director, will come forward.
Mayor, members of council, City Manager, thank you for this amazing opportunity. Thirty-five years ago, a young lady just graduating from Brooklyn Casey High School was looking for an opportunity. Little did Renee Terry know, it would become a lifelong adventure. Renee has held various roles within the city, her greatest, Parking Services, since nineteen ninety-seven. Those that have worked with her all agree, it's been an honor. Renee, your work and dedication will truly have a lasting impact on all of us. The friendships built will be forever with us. While I have only worked with Renee for the past five years, it's truly been a privilege. Renee, you have made such a difference with your enthusiasm, willingness to help others, often making what seemed complicated into a simple task. You've inspired all of us with your ideas, your laughter, and your support. To say you will be missed is such an understatement. You're one of those people who became a friend rather than just a coworker. On behalf of the city and Parking Services, thank you. We sincerely hope that retirement is wonderful and wish you lots of happy times with your family and plenty of hugs with baby Silas. The best is yet to come. And on behalf of the city, we have a plaque for you presented to Renee Terry to commemorate thirty-five years of dedication and service in the community of Columbia.
Thank you. I would like to thank the City of Columbia for thirty-five years of service. I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve as an employee, as well as learning and growing with the City of Columbia. A special thanks to my coworkers who have braced me over the years and helped me celebrate my, my life's milestone, such as the birth of my two beautiful children, Drew and Megan, along with my very recent birth of my wonderful grandson, Silas. We've laughed together, we've cried together, shared sweet and bitter memories, and I treasure each one of you. Blessings to you all, and thank you again.
Renee, thirty-five years is amazing, amazing, and we want to thank you for your service to the city. We want to remind you as, as children who have produced grandchildren for our parents that the kids still matter too, not just the grandbabies. We're learning that, but public service is, is a high calling to serve the people of your city and your community for thirty-five years is an amazing accomplishment. We want to say thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mayor Benjamin, I told Renee's mother, who's sitting there, that we were so thankful she shared her with us for all these years. Mayor Benjamin, I know this next item is really special to you, the introduction of the Mayor's Fellows for the Summer of twenty-twenty-one. Mr. Scott Garrick, Communications Director for the Office of the Mayor, will do the honors.
Superstars, one and all, please.
Thank you. Mayor, esteemed City Council members, City Manager, and staff attending, I would like to introduce our Summer of twenty-twenty-one Mayor's Fellows, and if you guys could come up and stand so everyone can see you.
Don't you love how Scott says "you guys"? You notice something here?
So I'm going to give them the opportunities to introduce themselves. I did want to take a minute just to sort of brag on them some because this has been an awesome team. You know, Mayor Benjamin introduced the Mayor's Fellows program when he first took office, and since then, there have been over three hundred students. And over the last year, we unfortunately have had our Mayor's Fellows, the last three teams preceding this, as virtual only, not coming to City Hall and performing all of their duties virtually. This is the first crew in over a year that has had to transition, and they started virtually, but they came back into City Hall into their cramped little dungeon-like office in the City Hall building and took on a number of tasks. Their term ends in just two weeks, and this summer, they have helped in an incredible array of tasks, not only for the mayor's office, but for a lot of other functions of City Hall and for the city as well. They've been speaking directly with constituents, they have composed, proofed, and edited letters and notifications, they've compiled and updated databases, and they've even done tracking and reporting on COVID-related news and activities. But in addition to that, they've worked on several of their own projects that they brought with them, things that were personal to them, that they wanted to enact, and different initiatives have included shots at the shop, which was encouraging local beauty salons and barber shops to spread information about vaccinations. They have also contacted Columbia residents with vaccine information and information about vaccine sites and vaccine safety. They've worked on economic, economic development projects, gathering information about hotel developers in the southeast, and they built a whole new database on media contacts that was a huge, huge database, not just for Columbia, not just for South Carolina, but for the southeast. Several of the fellows have been committed to increasing diversity awareness across the city, so they have worked with Soda City administrators to have monthly information booth featuring different cultures at Soda City Markets each Saturday. So the first booth, which will be August twenty-eighth, correct me if I'm wrong, Alice, August twenty-eighth, the first booth will feature Filipino, Americans. This is going to be an evergreen project that even though our fellows are gonna end their term in two weeks, this project's gonna be evergreen, and we hope we're gonna carry it on, and new teams of fellows are gonna be coming in and carrying on this tradition. You know, and finally, our fellows had the opportunity, since we were able to, you know, escape the constraints of being virtual, to see a lot of city functions, and they've seen our emergency management functions, they've visited our water division, and they also visited the Bull Street District, and I would personally like to thank Harry Tinsley, Clint Shealy, and Gregory Tucker for being excellent hosts and being excellent tour guides for all of those. So now, I'm gonna give each one the opportunity to just say their names and say a little bit about what they are gonna be doing in, in college. Start with Alice.
Hello, my name is Alice Hart, I'm a rising senior at the University of South Carolina.
Scott. Come on in the microphone. Come on in the microphone. Alice doesn't need a microphone, but, yeah.
Hello, my name is Alice Hart, I'm a rising senior at the University of South Carolina, and I am a philosophy major.
Good afternoon, my name is Hannah Headley, I'm a rising sophomore at Princeton University, where I'm studying public policy and international affairs.
Good afternoon, everyone, my name is Grace Tippett, I will be a rising junior at the University of South Carolina, and I'm studying journalism.
Hello, everyone, my name is Stephanie Daniel, I am a rising senior at the University of South Carolina, studying political science and Spanish, thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone, my name is Breanna Drayton, I go to Coastal Carolina University studying public health and business management.
Good afternoon, everyone, my name is Andrea Kimson, and I am a rising junior at the College of Charleston, where I'm majoring in international studies and economics.
It's a long walk, isn't it?
I know. Hi, my name is Haley Capps, I'm a rising junior at the University of South Carolina Honors College, and I'm majoring in English and Political Science with a minor in Journalism. Thank you.
Awesome. It's important to note that they always ask me, they have been the very best class of Mayor's Fellows ever, so I have to, to some of the former Mayor's Fellows in the room, sorry. By far, several of them maintain jobs while they also volunteered for the city, but it's an amazingly talented group of young leaders, and I encourage you to keep an eye on every single one of them, they're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna probably save, save us from ourselves in the future, very proud of them. Thank you, ladies, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Are you good? All right.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Good luck, ladies, proud to have you all. We're moving into a period of City Council discussion and action. Mayor Benjamin, we will start with the COVID-nineteen update as we normally do. Mr. Harry Tinsley, Emergency Management Director, is available for a COVID-nineteen situational report as well.
Yeah, I look forward to Director Tinsley's report. I have some comments, some of my colleagues may, may have them as well. Probably be worthwhile, Madam City Manager, let folks, remind folks of what we're doing as a city with our, our staff, but I have grave concerns about the rise of the, of the Delta variant. Some of you may have seen some of the most recent news from Prisma, which mirrors what we're seeing across the country, children's hospitals at capacity, our babies, laws passed by our General Assembly that prohibit us from actually protecting our children in public schools by requiring a masking or attempt to prohibit it. I don't think the law is, is legal or as prescriptive as some might indicate. We should be doing a lot more, and the reality is, is that, that while, I'll save my comments until you give your report, Harry, please.
Okay. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Madam City Manager, again, thank you for your time. I'll give you a quick update as far as the data on the COVID, as the mayor has alluded to, so everybody's aware that according to CDC, cases, hospitalizations, and deaths are on the rise once again nationally, fueled by the Delta variant, and nationally proportionally, it's about eighty, a little over eighty-two percent is predicted to be the increase based on the, the Delta variant. Also nationally, as of July twenty-ninth, the seven-day average of administered vaccines reported to the CDC shows a little over sixteen percent increase. That is encouraging from the previous weeks, it's attributed to, some of that is believed that the Delta variant is causing folks to go get vaccinated, so that's, that's a good, a good thing. As far as case rates, July thirty-first, nationally, twenty-six states are now classified as high with regards to community spread or community transmission. Eighteen states in the nation are now classified as being substantial, and South Carolina is one of those. The top state, the top five states are Louisiana, Florida, Arkansas, Missouri, and Alabama. Here in South Carolina, thirty-three of our counties now have high disease activity, thirteen have medium, and you'll notice just a few weeks ago, we, Richland County, was at a low, a low level, so we're back, back to that as well. Of note, the, according to the latest report as of June one, snapshot of data from June one to June thirtieth from DEHAC, of the over five thousand cases that were reported, ninety-three percent of those were considered, individuals considered not fully vaccinated. And then of the, over two hundred or two hundred and forty-three hospitalizations, eighty-six percent of those were considered not fully vaccinated. And then on that same report, thirty-nine reported deaths, ninety of those, ninety percent of those were considered not fully vaccinated. And we continue to roll out our strategy in the city, city staff, and our local partners, we continue to work with It's Your Shot Columbia and our campaign, and we are partnering this week with DEHAC to run vaccine clinics at our parks, and as of Thursday, August the fifth, Hyatt Park will be operational as a vaccine clinic, and all of this is on our website, and it's also on DEHAC's website, they can go to vaxlocator.dehec.sc.gov to find out additional information, also our Columbia social media pages. So, so the fifth of August will be Hyatt Park, and then the eleventh of August will be MLK Park, the twenty-fourth of August will be Melrose Park, and then the twenty-sixth of August will be Woodland Park, and those operations, those hours will be one, one PM to five PM. So as far as the latest Epi data that's coming out of, out of DX in South Carolina, case numbers today, just reported out, we're, we're now standing at five hundred and twelve thousand, four hundred and forty confirmed cases. There've been over eight, eight point five million tests to date. The confirmed case rates posted today in our state was one thousand six hundred and fifty-one, with four hundred and fourteen of those being probable, so that's two thousand and sixty-five cases as reported today. That's a nineteen point seven percent positivity rate out of those twenty thousand-plus test samples. There were also reported today, unfortunately, two new deaths to COVID that brings our state total to eight thousand seven hundred and forty-one. Here in Richland County, our case count for confirmed cases stands at forty thousand, forty-one thousand, seven fifty-four, and today's report for Richland County showed a hundred and eighty-six new confirmed cases and fifty-two probable, for a total of two hundred and thirty-eight for today's report out. Over the last fourteen days, we have had one thousand three hundred and fifty-eight new confirmed cases in Richland County as opposed to our last meeting here on the twentieth, where we had two hundred and eighty-eight. So we're, we're on the uptick, and we're now averaging ninety-seven new cases each day, that's up from twenty at our last meeting here. Also worth noting, as of, as I said earlier in the, in the beginning of the report, July twenty-eighth report for the fourteen-day Richland County recent disease incident activity rate, we're now high, we're at three hundred and eight point one per one hundred thousand, that's up from fifty-eight point two from the last report out. We're also at six point two percent positivity rate, that's up from two point eight from our last, last two-week report. Hospitalizations, bed utilization rates in the state still remain pretty good as far as statewide, seventy-seven point five percent for inpatient and seventy-one point five for ICU bed. Currently, there's seven hundred and twenty-nine patients hospitalized to COVID confirmed or suspected in our state, and that's about eight point three percent of bed utilization, whereas our last report, it was about three percent, so we're, we're moving in the wrong direction. Now, Richland County's bed utilization rate is at sixty-nine point five, there are sixty-two patients currently hospitalized to COVID confirmed or suspected. Also, the vaccination report as of the thirty-first for our state, forty-four point seven percent of South Carolinians are fully vaccinated, and fifty-one point five have received at least one shot. Here in Richland County, fifty-four point eight percent have, have received at least one vaccine, and fifty-two point eight are considered having completed their vaccination process. And also, from a national perspective, the CDC's latest report as of August the second, a hundred and sixty-four point nine million US citizens have been fully vaccinated, and forty-nine point seven percent have been, fully back, have been, received at least their one shot. And then eighty point one percent of those sixty-five and older have been fully vaccinated, and of note, seventy percent of the population, eighteen years or older, have, have received at least one, one vaccine. And if you need any questions, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Questions for Director Tinsley? Daniel?
Harry, thank you very much for that update. I know you talked about the vaccination locations, based on the new guidelines for testing, are we setting up some more testing sites for rapid tests because now it's no longer about symptoms as exposure? Do we have more testing sites because that's gonna be the key along with the vaccination to kind of get this under control?
Yes, sir, absolutely. Part of our process and our moving forward with the vaccinations here, and staff has been talking about that, we have reached out to DEHAC and our partner. There is sufficient capacity, twenty-six hundred Bull Street is one location where there's drive-through testing, and then we have additional testing locations, they're all listed, the testing capacity is, is sufficient for that, which is a good thing, I think we've, we've learned how to, the state has learned how to run that, that down, but we have reached out directly and make sure that, you know, if we increase our testing on a regular basis as a preventative strategy, or be able to monitor our employees and families and things of that nature, can they support that capacity as well, and absolutely, that's the direction that I've got was yes, they could do that, not a problem. Thank you.
Mr. McDowell?
Hey, let me ask you a question, usually you give us the zip-coded areas, maybe I missed it, the zip-coded areas where there are perhaps some hot spots. Are those, are those zip-coded areas still hot, or where are we with that?
I, the, the reporting rhythm for DEHAC has changed, some of it has gone from, it used to be a daily when we were in the middle of the spike or the pandemic, and now it's gone to a week and a month. That data, I'll have to drill down on some of that, that particular report that I was providing for you is now rolled up into the website under their dashboard, so you don't produce that on a, on a weekly, weekly basis, but I can pull that data and start reporting that out to y'all. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Devine.
Harry, are we still, this might be a quick question, but are we still testing our water and sewer, or sewer system to kind of see where there might be spread? Because to Councilman Rickman's point, you know, there are a lot of asymptomatic people. And so that might give us an indication as to where we have some increased spread, even if people don't have symptoms.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We are not, that was part, that testing was part of a grant through the CDC in partnership with DEHAC. That testing ceased about four or five months ago, and so we haven't resumed that. But I'll be glad to reach out to our partners at the university and see if there's, there's interest and express our interest and willingness to participate again.
I certainly, from our standpoint, you know, to the mayor's point, I, I think we are all a little handicapped. And as someone who has three children who will be in public school in three weeks, I'm very concerned. Where we are, children cannot get vaccinated, and now the schools are not mandating masks, or they can't mandate masks. We've been told that we can't mandate masks. And although I still somewhat disagree with our ability to do that if we see a need, but I would like to, to keep making sure that we're pushing as much information out as possible. And I think to be able to at least know where the spread is and hotspots within our own community, then we know how we can just maybe double down in some of those communities to help with preventative measures. Also, Mr. Mayor, and I know that your office did a lot with PPE, but I, I had a very interesting conversation with Dr. Bell last week about just the way things are going. And her assessment is just that really, the guidelines haven't changed, the preventive measures haven't changed. What has changed is people feeling like we're back to normal. And so I think the more that we maybe can stress not just the vaccinations, but also the PPE and all that other stuff, and maybe go back to where we were as far as aggressively trying to provide resources in the community, maybe more people will, will think back to where we were and hopefully get us to the point where they're providing, or they're following the guidelines so that we don't have to see more of an increase within our community.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Brennan?
One quick question. Harry, to follow up on Councilman Rickman, the rapid tests, are they available? Is that listed on the DEHAC website? Which sites are rapid? Okay. Wonderful. Thanks.
The, questions? The, we're looking at an increase in South Carolina, an increase in COVID cases raising, going up nearly tenfold between the first and last week of, of the month, a six-fold jump in COVID hospitalizations for children based on Director Tinsley's report, just in this county since our last meeting. A quintupling of the incidences of, of COVID, nineteen point seven percent positivity rate. A, and as Ms. Devine indicated, this is a pandemic of the unvaccinated. Those of us in this room make a choice as to whether or not to be vaccinated. Our children do not have that choice. And I think if it's not, we can debate the legality, although I believe that state law is not prescriptive and does not stop us from mandating a masking. I believe that we should seriously look at mandating masking in public schools in the city of Columbia. I know that would require us declaring a state of emergency. I have the authority as mayor to do so. The council has to back me up on that at the appropriate time. If these numbers still continue going in that direction, we need to seriously look at declaring a state of emergency and passing ordinances requiring masking to protect our children. You may choose to do what you will with your children. I think that I have a responsibility and a right to protect my children from those who may not take their health as, in the same way as we do. Adults are fair game. Children are not to have a children's hospital at capacity day-to-day based on the incidence of COVID-19 and seeing the aggressiveness of the Delta variant attacking our young. It would be immoral for us not to act unless we see a significant change in the trend of these numbers. We're going in the wrong direction, and we need to decide as a community if we want to go in the right direction. We're doing the things we should be doing inside the city, government, inside the municipal corporation as a city. I want to thank Teresa, you, Harry, and the entire team for your commitment. We've got to do more. We're watching our staff continue to be infected. We're watching our officers being infected. We, we've got to do more. And this is a plaintive plea to every single one of our citizens within the sound of our voice to do your part. Get vaccinated. If you choose not to be vaccinated, take care of yourself, social distance, wear your mask. We are back in the middle of a storm, a pandemic, yes, of the unvaccinated. The challenges that our babies are unvaccinated. And if we, as a community, are not willing to do what is necessary to protect them and keep them safe and keep them alive, then that is indeed a statement about who we are as a people. It's not convenient. It's hot in Columbia, South Carolina. No one likes to wear masks. We're tired. But I believe that the preservation of our, the lives of our children is something that we ought to take that much more seriously. If, in fact, again, these numbers continue to rise at the rate that they're rising, I will declare a state of emergency and call council in, under our state law, to decide whether or not to back my play. Let's see where we go from here. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Mr. Duval?
Just a question for you. If you think that the proviso in the budget doesn't preempt our authority, should we not challenge that proviso now before it is time to?
I was preparing to discuss on the executive session. I do believe that we should, Howard. I do believe that we should. The way it was drafted, I'm not sure if it, I think even the Attorney General indicated that it was clumsily or sloppily. I forget the term that he, he used. I think it was intended to make sure that we all had a way out, not using state appropriated funds or whatever it was drafted. I, I, I'm not sure any well-meaning policymaker would take away a parent's ability to protect their child. And that's the way I read that, that language. We don't have jurisdiction over the state. We don't have jurisdiction over the entire county. We do have jurisdiction over the city. And I think we should be prepared to legally defend that position. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Mayor Benjamin, at this time, we can entertain the Columbia Metropolitan Convention Center update. I know that you have some talking points and staff can assist in any way that you like.
Just a, a couple, a couple of points to, to mention. We had this on our agenda. We discussed it. Some of the legal issues regarding an executive session at our last meeting. It's important to let people know that we have made significant progress, that schematic design obviously has already been completed in partnership with the Convention Center. Many folks have seen those designs. We are doing our due diligence. The city's conducting and performing due diligence activities such as surveying, locating underground, underground utilities, geotechnical investigation, stormwater management review, and others in order to verify a cost estimates and confirm technical feasibility. It's very important, I note to several of our colleagues here, that, that we conduct an aggressive financial review to make sure we do all of our due diligence as exactly what this regional effort to potentially build a convention center costs us. We're working with the convention center, the county, and financial advisors to identify different funding mechanisms and fully vet operational viability of the proposed expansion. Potential sources of revenue for debt service include, of course, state accommodations, tax, tourism development fees, and certainly a partnership with our regional governments. We are, we continue to, to move rapidly with these activities happening on parallel paths. And we're excited about the positive impact that this expansion will mean for the city and for the Midlands region. We will do our due diligence. We will cross every T, dot every I, and make sure that the fiduciary obligations to the taxpayers of Columbia and the Midlands are addressed. And, and this, this project has the pencil out. So we'll, we'll be very aggressive and continue to seek state funding and other funding that might be available as well for this expansion. We set at the center of a $43 million gross domestic product. The people of this Midland, of the Midlands and Columbia contribute to the state's economic vitality every single day. And I think it's not, it's not wrong to ask for some of those dollars to be repatriated back to this community to help support our small businesses, our restaurants, our hotels, and others that make Columbia a special place to live, work, play, and prosper. But just wanted to give an update. We continue to move forward, and we will continue to move forward, building partnerships every step of the way.
All right. Ms. City Manager?
Yes, sir. Thank you. At this time, we will take up the fiscal year 2021, 2022 Hospitality Tax Grant Program. Ms. Missy Kaufman, our Budget and Program Management and Grants Director, will come forward to assist council. And really, this is you all's opportunity to work through these allocations.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, City Manager. Thank you very much. As discussed, the proposed total allocations available for the, as fiscal year 2021, '22, you have available 4.6 million. You received a little over 5.6 million in requests. And I believe City Council is ready to make allocations based on your discussions.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Duval?
Mr. Mayor, we, I want to thank my colleagues for helping us go through the requests that have been made by the many organizations that want to participate in hospitality tax. And we have consolidated those onto a spreadsheet that is in possession of Ms. Kaufman. And it, it better be guarded carefully because I think it might be the only version of the spreadsheet that we have. But I, we, we are within budget that, that was allocated to the council. And I'd like to make a motion that we approve the spreadsheet, subject to the organizations being funded, completing, having eligible projects and completing the necessary request paperwork.
All right. Mr. Davis and Ms. Devine?
Just a quick question. Howard and, let's see, the, the last, the second review. Do, do we have that handed?
Yes.
I don't. I didn't see that.
He asked if?
You're going to go? Yeah, I only had a question about one item. I, let me look at it before I raise a question.
And that was mine. I was just going to say, I know we, there's been a lot of discussion. I just hadn't seen the final. And I wanted to be able to confirm that those were the numbers that I was talking to Councilman Duval about.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor? While, while they take time, checks, spreadsheets, can we, Missy, will you talk about future processes for H-Tax? Now that we're getting back, what, what's next for review and for future H-Tax submissions?
Mr. Brennan, I think, I think we need to go back to the committee process. I think it's important to have, obviously, everything's off, off schedule this year. But I think that process is so important, incredibly important.
Agree, agree. I just wanted to get input. That is the plan to move forward, I guess is, is the consensus. When does that process start? When will the next round of submissions be from our wonderful groups?
So normally, under, under normal allocations, the Hospitality Tax Grant application process opens in around January, February. And we typically do a kickoff or a training for the organizations interested in applying. And then from there, then the Hospitality Tax Committee meets somewhere in May and brings the, forward the presentation or recommendations to City Council once the budget has been approved and there's an available amount for allocation. I will say, one of the first things that needs to come up here in the next month or so will be the reappointment of the Hospitality Tax Committee members. A lot of the members have now, it's time for, for, for reappointments or appointments. So that process and Ms. Jenkins, she stepped out, will be bringing that forward process as well.
And, and folks, and people apply for those positions?
That, it has not opened yet, but yes, I'm sure they typically do, yes.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Missy?
Yes, sir?
McDowell? Just based on the conversation that you and I have had as it relates to the allocations, the allocations that will take place today. There will also be additional, I shouldn't say additional, but there will also be room for those smaller organizations perhaps to look at possibly some funding because of COVID and not being able to do that application.
So the way that the last conversation we had a little earlier, all funds have been allocated. But if there are available funds, again, once we close out the year, we'll sort, of course, let council know.
Just wanted that for the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Davis?
I, my, my question was regarding the, the results of, of the second review we had. And, but I can, I, I'd just like to, I can go with what is presented and, and just kind of reserve the privilege to have some further discussion if needed.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's all.
Call for a question?
Question? With the previous question, Kirk, call her over.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes?
Are y'all going to hand out a copy of the final since I don't think anybody but Howard knows all the numbers? I think it might be appropriate that we vote on it after we've all had a copy of it.
Sure.
I mean, I, I know we collectively sent in information, but I don't think it's prudent for us to vote on something that we're not sure where, where, where it all landed. Should we not get a copy of it first?
I did, I just, I don't vote on things I don't, I didn't see. I did see the numbers, so let me make that clear. Yes, I did. Trust but verify. However you want to do it, who had, do you have the final numbers? Do you want to review them quickly?
If we, with all due respect, since y'all are usually doing this until we get in here, I have to allow Missy the opportunity to catch her breath and to go take care of that for you, but we'll try to do it.
We're going to take them up today. So if you want to go, get a document updated for the most recent conversations? Let's do it, and we're going to do it today, though. All right.
Yes, I can do it.
And hopefully get it done and email it so we'll have it available on our, on our pads or however. All right?
Do it right now.
Call for a question?
We'll pick it up.
We're going to, we're going to leave that on the, on the table just right now. Just for a moment. Yeah, we, we're not on the table.
So we're going to take it up at the end of the meeting after Missy has time?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right.
She's going to run back to the office and get some copies.
We, we will get it for you right here in this building. We have a printer in Busby Street.
Oh, my goodness.
We'll make it happen for y'all. I'm sorry.
Prior to the approval of the consent agenda, there have been some requests by council to broaden our lobbying team. I don't think there's any opposition to that. Let's, let's make sure we have the, the funding appropriated to, to do so. And we can take that up after some dialogue amongst us prospectively.
Okay.
Yes, shake your head.
In the interest of peace.
At the same level?
Yes.
Okay.
Consent agenda items seven through 33, is there a motion for approval?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second?
Second discussion. Remove the previous question. Kirk, call her over.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes?
Mr. Rickman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Thank you.
And those of you who are waiting for H-Tax numbers, this won't be a long process. We're going to, we're going to move through, burn through this agenda pretty quickly. And Mrs., Ms. Kaufman will be back very, very soon. All right, item 34?
Yes, our ordinance is first reading, ordinance number 2021-066. And then in the 1998 Code of Ordinances of the City of Columbia, South Carolina, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 2, Mayor, Council, and City Manager, Division 2 Council Meetings, Section 25.
That's been approval.
Is there a second? Second. Is there any discussion? Remove the previous question. Kirk, call her over.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes?
Mr. Rickman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Item 35, a period of resolutions, resolution number R2021-081, ratifying and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the City of Columbia and the Midlands Housing Alliance, Inc., for 2025 Main Street for fiscal and the Midlands Housing Alliance, Inc., for 2025 Main Street for fiscal year 2021-2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Move the previous question. Kirk Carrow.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Item thirty-six. Resolution number R-2021-082, ratifying and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the City of Columbia and USC Housing First for fiscal year 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Move the previous question. Kirk Carrow.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
Item thirty-seven, resolution number R-2021-084, ratifying and authorizing the city manager to execute an Incliment Weather Center service agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Move the previous question. Kirk Carrow.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye. Like the, putting this point of personal privilege, just thanking all of you, Housing First, United Way, and others we partner with on the Incliment Weather Center, and certainly Craig, you and the team at Transitions, for the work that you do every single day, meeting the needs of our unsheltered citizens and residents. It's tough work, we all know. We've seen the significant defunding of behavioral health services, and usually that falls directly in the laps of each of you, and regrettably, oftentimes, our law enforcement, where certainly that's not the place to provide services. So just thanks for what you do, and we, I'm glad we're able to get, again, unanimous support for this, for these documents. These documents. Ms. Devine?
Thank you. Similar, I just want to thank you all for the work that you do. I did want to say to Craig, this Saturday, my daughter and her classmates volunteered at Transitions, and we were able to go in on Saturday and talk with the residents, and your staff was doing a great job, as much as they are understaffed, and everybody has certainly seen the challenges that we have in making sure that things continue to run, but you guys are doing a great job, so I did want to say that. But I also wanted to say, and we've talked about this, recognizing that we've got, you know, almost a lot of new folks, new faces, who will come up here next year. But I will say that we have got to talk a little bit more about where we're going as far as how do we meet the needs of our unsheltered citizens. I think Transitions is doing a great job. Housing First is doing an amazing job. We've kept consistent funding over the last several years, but I think we do have to look at creative solutions on how do we address that moving forward. So I'd love to talk to Craig and Housing First and others and see how do we continue to address that. But I also would like to see how we can, one thing that my children noticed is just how much we've got to do as far as educating community. They had a lot, these young ladies had lots of great questions. Your staff did a wonderful job. But it highlighted those of us up here who kind of see it and we know what happens. Our general public doesn't know a lot of things, and so I also would love to talk about how do we creatively make sure that as we're having the further conversations about affordable housing, about how do we deal with our unsheltered citizens, our mental health challenges as well, that we universally talk about how we're educating the community as a whole about the depth and breadth of the problem and the multitude of solutions so that people don't think one way and don't really know that this agency isn't the one that provides that service. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Devine. Mr. Davis?
I, I give a lot of credit to the providers as well. I was kind of impressed when I looked at the numbers, I think, last night with Housing First. I remember, I think I've mentioned to the council some years ago, I was, I believe, in the Midwest, and heard, first heard about Housing First through National Public Radio, and I was impressed with the concept and the fact that it's kind of a first, I think part of their first step is putting folks in a housing situation and trying to get them to move on to independence. And I'm hoping that as we continue our role, that the transition aspect of all of this results in individuals having their own space for daily living. And I don't think we can go wrong with that. The numbers look good, and if we continue with the success and the partnerships that we have, I'm sure that we're gonna reach that plateau. But I think it's, I've always been impressed with the fact that that is a project that was not a hit and a miss, or just throwing something on the wall to see if it sticks, that we kind of worked together and put together a model that was generally accepted and provided throughout the country. And so here, I think we're doing a good job with it and hope that we continue that. So, you know, everybody should pat their selves on the shoulders for that one.
I agree. How impressed is amazing. All right. Any comments? Come to the manager.
Mayor Benjamin? Resolution number R-2021-064, authorizing consumption of beer and wine only within Boyd Plaza adjacent to the Columbia Museum of Art for CMA Tour and Tasting on Wednesday, August 11th, with a rain contingency date of Thursday, August 19, 2021.
Is there a motion?
Subcommittee?
Is there a second? Second. Any discussion? Move the previous question. Kirk Carrow.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Mr. Duval? Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye. Any city council committee reports or referrals?
Mr. Davis, did you see my notes?
Oh, yes.
Would you like to do that?
You wanna help me with that? I, I want to recommend that we refer, which committee is that? What would be the most appropriate committee?
Economic and Community Development, yes, sir.
Economic and Development Committee, the the issue of, well, not the issue, but I think, I'd like to see the committee receive a report on the status and progress of
No, we have.
Of how we're doing with the repairs and overall response to the
With our disaster recovery.
Flood disaster relief.
Yes, sir.
Program.
And it's probably just a regular update that maybe we can begin putting together for you all anyway. I meet with the staff, with the Said, of course, the Community Development Team, but also with our program management team, ICF, and then our construction management team, SVP, you know, several times a month. And so there's a lot of progress being made. Obviously, we did the big presentation for you all a couple months ago when we engaged them, and we've continued to work. And so I know you get questions from the applicants based off the new direction of the program. That's to be anticipated, but certainly we can provide an update in the committee if that's, I mean, that might be the better venue for that, so you can ask questions and we can have some dialogue. Obviously, some things that are very specific to certain applicants, we won't be able to publicly get into because it's personal to those applicants. But I think we can give you enough information that'll probably help you better understand some of the questions that you're receiving.
I think we should do that, you know, as I'm still getting communications. That's the one I shared with you this morning.
Yes, sir.
And so we need to be able to respond, but at the same time, too, I'm also concerned that we are going where we should be going with that, given, you know, the transition, our recent transition in that area.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. So you will.
Can I ask a question, Councilman Davis, before we throw that to Subcommittee? How often do we give updates, Ms. Wilson, to the applicants? Because like Councilman Davis, I've gotten an uptick, and he's nice enough to call them questions. I call them something else, but people are concerned about the new timelines. Keeping people engaged and up to date weekly, I wouldn't want to see us meet in a couple weeks, Councilman Davis, to get an update. I'd like for us to know that the frequency of connecting with our residents that are affected by this program are happening at a pretty good clip, so we don't get those frustration calls of, you know, where are we in the process?
Yes, sir. I'm not sure if the Said is here and it can speak better to actually what's happening on a day-to-day basis, but I do know that all of these applicants are assigned case managers, and it should not be that they are having to reach out to you all. So I will make that a goal of mine this week to see why that might be happening. Are you feeling like there's an uptick?
I was very, yeah, absolutely. I was very impressed with the presentation by our new consultants and had faith that they can deliver. So projecting that confidence to our residents and giving them the confidence is very important.
I totally agree. I have a lot of confidence in the program manager that we have engaged. But we, you know, obviously with anything, when you transition, you gotta get in a good rhythm, as I like to say. So I need to find out, and I will do that as to what may be causing some of the applicants to feel like they're not getting, you know, adequate response in a timely manner.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if we can fast-track that, I think that'll help.
And you still want to refer to committee?
Yes.
Okay.
So we need to set it up as soon as possible.
Yes, sir.
Second.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye. Any other referrals or reports? We have Margaret Clarkson. Did you want to speak, Margaret? Sign in like a beautiful citizen. Okay, all right. Then we have only executive session left unless we're ready for the report back on H-Tax. You been checking that, Jeff?
And probably with the uncertainty of the pandemic, Theresa, I know we, of course, had to abandon the process just in the interest of public health, public safety. We might need to start earlier with the process than we normally would if it helps. I'm not sure, whenever our numbers are available, our projections are available for the next fiscal year, pulling the committee together, I think it's important to get the citizens back involved in making this, these decisions. It keeps us, we still stay involved. I'm not sure we've ever been uninvolued. But this is the most involved we've been, and I do, of course, you always gotta make sure, you check Howard's numbers. He can count, but the things that he likes the most, he tend to get a lot more attention. But I do want to say, Howard, thank you for taking on the responsibility of making sure it gets done and it's close to the beginning of the fiscal year as possible. If you hadn't, I'm not sure we'd have gotten it done. So I appreciate it, and all the colleagues. I think everybody wanted to trust but verify and make sure the numbers add up.
He was smiling too much.
But I think, I think the, I've always believed strongly, if you look at public record, that council obviously has the responsibility for making the ultimate decisions, but they've been, usually we operate around the edges, and ninety to ninety-five percent of decisions are made by our citizens committee, which I think is the way it ought to be, in order to go back to being. So if time might help, might help us, let's go ahead and stand it up sooner rather than later. We're a good committee. Any idea on timeline, Jeff? So.
It's in email box.
Yeah, she sent it.
Oh, they have electronic versions? Why don't we do that?
On iPad.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, yeah, so, yeah, tell, let's do that. Let's not worry about paper. We're supposed to be moving towards a paperless society anyway, so let's stay.
Jeff, it's not gonna do any good to send the one that requires that kind of paper to them. Use my spreadsheet, and this guy, I already got it formatted to fit on eight and a half filelet. Missy uses big columns.
She does.
Well, when you're only looking for what you're interested in, it's easy.
Mr. Mayor, while we got, we've got a moment. Let me just give the I had a thought for the COVID stuff.
Yes, sir.
Well, I think we need to get our PR people, or maybe some of the television channels, to come up with something like a clock ticking, where you tell the person that on August the third, if you get your J and J shot, it's not gonna be until August the X before it is effective, to let people know that they can't take the shot and be covered from the virus. The reason I'm thinking of this is just about every night, when you look at whatever channel you're looking at, they'll interview somebody in a hospital situation with all the COVID patients coming in, and the patients are saying, "Give me the vaccine, give me the vaccine." Well, it's too late when you get to the hospital.
Yeah.
I think we need to have a ticking clock.
I think that's a good idea. Let's, let PR take them on.
I was gonna ask Harry to speak to that. Me and I had a conversation about this.
We're having some challenges with the printer, so we're not gonna wait for the printed versions. Let's see if we can get a nice overview. We trust Missy's presentation highlights is more than sufficient. So let's go and get it in here.
That's Harry.
Harry, the question that, or comment Mr. Duval had was, we talked about this a little bit yesterday, and the terminology being used, but you can't say you're fully vaccinated till so much time after the second, either the second dose or if it's Johnson &amp; Johnson. Can you speak to that a little bit, please?
Sure. Based on the way DHEC was reporting out through their data sets, there's fourteen days post your second shot, or post your first shot, if you do the J and J one shot. After fourteen days, you're considered fully vaccinated. So if you end up, some of those, I'm acknowledging some of those that are listed as being not fully vaccinated could have been those who only had one shot or did not fully complete the process. That's the way I interpret their definition in the writing.
And that's what I think we need to play up in a PR campaign of some sort. The fact that you can't take the J and J and expect to be covered tomorrow. It'll be fourteen days from now, so if it's August the third, you're looking at August the seventeenth, maybe, to be covered. And I think the people that are not vaccinated need to understand that it's gonna take some time to go through the process. It'll take longer than that if you do a Moderna or Pfizer.
Yeah, I just see the definition of how they categorize it, but I would also say that, I mean, it would be understandable that there are some of those who only had one, never came back for the second.
Yeah.
You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So they only have a limited amount of protection.
I really want to, yeah, no, thank you. I think that's part of a robust effort that the city is being engaged, and I really want to thank, again, you all for the public education campaign we've been on. Mr. Rickaman?
I just, I wanted to add, I had got a text that reminded me
I just, I wanted to add, I had got a text that reminded me, uh, the state papers run several ads with the guidelines and everything, and there's a mistake in it, it says sixteen or older when it's twelve and older. Uh, so if we could try to reach out, I don't know who ran it, if it was DHEC or Prisma or whoever, but make sure, because I think there's just so much misinformation that people aren't thinking clearly about making decisions because they don't know what to trust or what to read, because, you know, I mean, the reality is, is, you know, eighty, what is it, eighty-eight percent of the people who are vaccinated aren't going to get hospitalized? I mean, I think that's a, a big number, I'd take the gamble on and get vaccinated, but we just need to make sure the information that's getting out is correct.
And that was in the state paper?
It was in state paper, full ad, um, I asked them to send me a copy, so as soon as I get it, I'll send it to you.
We've got to double check, too, which one, unless that's changed, because I know at one point Pfizer, as, as at the time I, it affected my daughter, it was sixteen and older.
But it's changed since May, right?
So I, I don't know, so we'll have to double check.
Yeah, I, I know my wife's practice is pushing everybody who's over twelve to get vaccinated.
With any of them?
Is it over twelve or twelve and under?
Over twelve.
Yeah, anybody over twelve
We, um,
is eligible for the vaccine.
For any of the three, though?
And also encourage everyone, as part of our campaign, that even if you are vaccinated, it's still important to engage in, in smart practices, uh, while rare, um, breakthrough cases are still real, and I do want to, uh, make sure we all, uh, say our prayer for Senator Graham and his recovery, uh, as well, as one of the more high-profile, um, breakthrough cases. We do not need hard copies of the document, uh, if we have an electronic version available, which we all have in front of us, let's move forward with the presentation.
I, have you gotten it? I haven't gotten it.
It's on, it's on your inbox?
It's not on, it's not on any of my devices.
And did you check your email? She sent it to our email.
It's at three PM, Daniel.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I'm.
A three PM email from Missy Kaufman.
Well, it's on this one.
Okay, you got it? Okay. Yeah, so let's use that, and let's not worry about a hard copy.
It doesn't start at the top, you look, she's left off the, um, council-funded funds.
I don't need the hard copy, you can share with some of the, um, folks in the audience, if you have some additional copies. Additional copies, just. I know we have at least a, a half dozen people over here who, who would like to see copies of the, of the presentation as well. Thanks, Shanae, she's going to get some copies, yes. All right. Missy? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all, appreciate your, your patience as we
Thank you.
Work through our.
And please let us know when you send out those applications for the H-Tax Committee. Thank you.
We absolutely will. Yes. Okay, so, um, do you want to review any of these or just any other discussions?
Top line, top line summary, and we all have the, the specific documents and.
All right. So as mentioned, um, there was a total of five point eight million in request, uh, you had available to allocate four point six million. The line item agencies, which are organizations that have a particular city interest, either the city is a facilitator or owns facilities or has somehow convened the organizations, two point two million, uh, two point, two million, two hundred eighty-three thousand, and then additional allocations for different organizations and line items or, or events, totals, uh, another two point four, or two point three million for a total allocation, two point two million, five hundred seventy-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Again, that's four million, five hundred seventeen thousand, three hundred eighty-eight dollars.
Uh, questions from Ms. Kaufman? Ms., uh, Ms. Devine?
Missy, I just see a couple noted, um, the groups were not eligible for various reasons. You do communicate to them why they're not eligible, correct?
Yes, what, yes, it is, and usually it's, um, something that could be rectified, it's not, uh, just estimated.
Other questions from Ms. Kaufman?
Oh, one thing that has, one question that came up, uh, we did not fund anybody, any, any organization more than requested, with the exception of Columbia sixty-three, which was a special situation.
Yes.
That we did give them an extra twenty-five thousand dollars, but everything else was within the
Request.
request of the organization.
I would note that these allocations put you back in line with fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand and twenty funding allocations, so, uh, obviously better than we did the prior fiscal year during the pandemic, so.
All right, any other questions from Ms. Kaufman? Any on readiness?
I'm okay.
All right, discussion period.
I was on one level of advocacy, and I, I was told that the, uh, organization requested what, requested what's on the, what's showing on the page, so. I'll put my advocacy to rest.
Okay.
All right. I want to make sure, uh, Mr. Duval and Mr. Rickaman? We good? All right, with the previous question? I'm sorry, Ms. Devine?
Uh, just, just moving forward, um, and I, I see that, um, we do have the township on here, I know there were some conversations, um, maybe over the last few weeks, um, regarding, uh, whether or not there are people in the township that believe we, as council, know what they do and what the benefit is. I think most of us do know that, but I know it's been at least a few years since we've had Ms. Alman come and present, um, and so I would like to, to do that, because I think that it is a county-owned facility, but the county, um, does not fund the foundation at the level that we might assume, and certainly when people go to the township and they go to eat and other things, we, as a city, benefit, so I, I think we just need to make sure that we strengthen that dialogue, uh, with that organization, um, so that people understand our role in supporting them.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Devine. Madam Kirk, please call a roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell? Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Vine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye. Thank you, ma'am. Uh, we do have, um, one citizen who's called in online, Missy, thank you for, um, operating so effectively on the fly. Uh, is he online?
Yeah, he's supposed to be here, Mr. Michael Watson.
Mr. Watson here? Okay.
Okay, thank you, mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, all right, I have no other citizens who've signed up to speak. Madam City Manager, we're good? All right, and want to remind everyone that tonight is National Night Out, this is, uh, when communities show that we don't need others to keep our communities safe, that the only way we stay safe is if we, uh, work together, uh, so we encourage you to participate in National Night Out this evening. Mr. Duval, you have a motion for him?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I, I move, go into executive session, receipt of legal advice related to matters covered by attorney-client privilege pursuant to thirty dash four dash seventy-eight-two COVID-nineteen gun crime legislation, discussion of negotiations, instance of proposed contractual arrangement pursuant to thirty dash four dash seventy-eight-two convention center.
All right, so a second? Any discussion?
Wait, wait a minute, Mr. Mayor, I, I left off.
Okay, please.
I left off, um, discussion of negotiations, instance of proposed contractual arrangement pursuant to thirty dash four dash seventy-eight-two hospitality tax bond refunding, since we have our lawyers sitting out there.
Second. Second by Mr. Davis. Discussion. With the previous question, Clark, call a roll.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.